Alternate. You're now. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna follow the regular meeting of the Kent and the Wetlands Commission to order at, I think, seven oh two, if that's right. And for the record show that our land use administrator, Ty Kern, and our secretary, Donna Hayes, and our regular members, Marge Smith, myself, Ken Johnson, and it looks like Anthony. Are you, I'm trying to remember if you're a, I believe you're an alternate, right?
Correct.
And Jeff, um, welcome as an alternate, and we need to, we're gonna need to elevate one or the other. Um, probably Anthony at the moment for voting status. Can we, can we elevate both? Ty?
Um, I think you can. So you need four for a quorum, but the full membership is five, so. You can do all of them. Yep.
So we just need a motion to elevate Tony and Jeff.
So moved.
And then a second. Ken Johnson. Ken, you're muted. I don't know if you're trying to talk.
Uh-oh.
Ken Johnson, you're muted.
All right, okay, how about now?
Perfect, thank you. Did you second?
Second, yes.
Thank you. And all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, so that makes Tony, Anthony and Jeff voting members for tonight's meeting. Very good. So, did everybody have a chance to read the minutes of July twenty fifth?
I did, nicely done as usual.
Yeah. Did you see any corrections or changes?
Nope.
Me neither.
Me neither.
How about you, Ken Johnson? Did you see any changes?
I have it memorized and it looks perfect.
Anthony, how about you? Are we good?
Yes, no changes.
All right, great. Then we just need a motion to approve.
So moved. As written.
Thank you, Marge. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Very good. Nice job, you guys. All right. Um, we have nothing under old businesses. That cracked tie, nothing came in. So we are on to new business, and the first one is Austin Brown, five twenty nine Skiff Mountain Road, and um, I know that she's here, and I also wondered, Ty, Ty, did you want to kind of walk us through this or, or uh, just let Austin do that?
Yeah, actually, um, Pat Hackett is here as the engineer, and I think he
Hi, Pat.
And he threw, he threw the plans for it, and um, you know, basically, this is a property that already has a little cottage on it and some outbuildings, and he's, she's looking to build a formal um, single-family home on the property within the regulated area.
And did you see issues or problems, Ty?
Um, so the, the plan itself, um, I, I personally found hard to navigate a little bit, but they did supply supplemental information, so it's kind of like a a, a portion of the property and not the entire property as a whole, but if you look at the supplemental information, it shows the full property, kind of gives you a better picture. Um, there wasn't a legend on it, but I was able to figure my way through it and distances, I just needed to use a ruler to, to figure out the distances from the wetlands, but um.
You're saying, so, so that information needs to be added to this plan?
It's not terribly clear, so I mean, that's, that's at the commission's pleasure, but you may want it just um.
No, I don't think it's at our pleasure. I think it's required part of the application.
Okay.
May I, may I speak to that?
Well, hang on one sec before you do. So we need to have that information added by the applicant, right? Ty?
Yeah.
It appears, I, I think it's on here.
Okay. You can see.
I do too.
I see, I see a one hundred foot line.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see a two hundred foot line.
It's here.
Oh, yeah, I've seen, I saw those. I'm just saying the actual, like, you need a ruler to, to measure the distance from the actual activities. But yeah, that's on there. The self fence is on there.
And the topography's on there.
In the corner, yes. The whole picture of the property is not there, but like I said, there's supplemental information that came with the package, so if you use the two together, it, it makes it a little bit easier.
Again, could I clarify that the last?
Oh, just hang on one second, um, Marge. Or I'm sorry, Austin.
No, I understand.
Yeah, um, Marge, were you able to figure this out by looking at it, or do you think we need one site plan with all the information on it, or what?
I, I was pretty much able to figure it out, although I was not clear at all where the pasture property is and where on the pasture property the proposed house might be. Uh, maybe I just missed something. I, 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 I'm looking, I'm gonna try to get back to the application right now, let's see.
Okay, so we can see the the actual site. Can you, Pat, are you manipulating this or is Ty?
Uh, I am. I think it's on my screen.
Can you answer that question for Marge?
Yeah, the, this is the USGS that's on the first sheet in the upper right corner. And uh, that's the whole parcel land, so you do this at twenty scale, and it was no way I could fit it all.
So those two, two arrows show the two different potential.
Okay, I, I have another meeting that I have to attend to. If, if I could run through this, I apologize.
No, that'd be great. That'd be great.
So in the upper southwest corner is the uh, the new septic site, the new house planned site. Uh, and then because there's going to be another um building on this property, and there's the cottage that's there right now, it, it required a B one hundred A for the Torrenton area health. So that's why it's a two-sheet plan. On the second sheet, there's a two hundred scale that uh, gives you an overview using an ortho. And uh, you can see this is where the existing well is. Uh, this is where the B one hundred A uh, would, is proposed for the cottage that's down in the southeast corner. And then in the southwest corner is where the new building would be. It's a three-bedroom. It would be a modular, a, a pretty short driveway with a, a maximum slope of six and a half percent, I believe it was. Uh, the wetlands were flagged by uh, Jay Fane.
So can you show, can you pull up uh, and just show us the wetlands in relation to what's being proposed?
Okay. Um, I'm gonna have to go to another sheet.
Yeah, and did that answer your question, Marge, about the?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, you still got the two arrows there, so you're primarily looking at the one that's to the left of the pond?
Yeah.
Correct, to the left of the pond, um, in the uphill corner of the property. Um, the two hundred foot line, yeah, figures, I have to go back to this view. Uh, it's an AutoCAD thing with the screen.
It's okay.
The line that says two hundred on it is two hundred feet from the brook, from the brook's edge, and the one that's a hundred foot is from the uh, flagged wetlands. Uh, and that, this is where you would end up. We are uh, into the two hundred uh, foot uh, in this area here.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. Can you show me the wetland line relative to what you're proposing to do, the new construction?
The wetland line.
I saw the two hundred foot and a hundred foot, but I'm, I've lost the location of the new.
Yeah, and I don't think I have the, the brook.
And you know, that's what we need in one place. That actually is what we need in one place.
Okay, um, it would probably be easier just to uh, uh, do one sheet that just shows the wetlands in relation to these. I do have some distances.
In relation to the activities that would be exactly what we need?
Yeah, because this, this is uh, the brook. I'm sorry, this is the pond. So one hundred and forty-eight feet to that corner, and then on the septic portion of it. I did have a line here. Well, um, there's the two hundred foot, so we're, we're about a hundred and ninety-six.
Okay, again, we need the actual new work in relation to the wetlands with the distance measured out on one site plan with the topography.
Um, I'll put it all on, on this, on this new sheet. They won't have all the other stuff. Okay, that's easy to do.
Yeah, um, you know, we can't take action tonight anyway, so you've got time to get it for the next meeting, but it needs to be easy for us to see and, and be something that, once it gets on the record, somebody two years from now will be able to figure it out without having had the benefit of this conversation. Yeah.
Yep, um, okay, I'll have that uh, in by the end of the week. Uh, do you mind if I move on to the next one?
Go ahead.
Um, I, 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 they're, they're, I'm up already on the other one. Uh, the, the next one was the Cabo Road. Um, and I did send Ty a, a, a new PDF, and uh, from what I understand, there, there will be additional information. Uh, they're looking to put trees in along uh, Kent Cornwall Road. Um, from what I understand, in, in this area here.
So again, you will be providing an accurate site plan for this application, correct?
Right. And um, I'll make sure we have uh, something similar to what we're doing with Austin's. Uh, that, that you can have the full, the full view. Um, the changes from the original uh, plan, the paper plans that you have are, uh, these two tanks were here. Uh, they've been moved about thirteen feet uh, further away from the brook. And the well uh, moved from, I, I believe it was here, uh, uh, closer to the property line. Uh, we do have the setback lines. Here's two hundred feet from water and the brook. Um, it's a strange thing it does in here with the brook.
Well, you know, I think that for the benefit of the commission, we're gonna need to walk through this again with you at the next meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
And if we have questions, we may need to extend the approval, so um, because this feels a little bit like we're not actually, we don't have a complete application, although I appreciate the work that's gone into it. Uh, you're not sure about certain things. You're gonna need to be sure, um, once you submit that site plan, because that's what we'll be approving.
Yep.
All right.
Uh, the uh, existing septic is not in great shape. It's out in front of the house. And uh, we did test an area that's over by a landscaping hump between that and the pond. Uh, and, and the upper area, and the upper area soils are, are, are so uh, nice. It's uh, worth relocating the well. Um, there would have been a, a big fill packet if we were to uh, put it down on the other side, so. Um, but I will have that extra information. I've uh, put in contact with someone and uh, I'll have it on the plan for next month, uh, month's meeting. I can't hear you.
Let's go back to Austin's proposal.
Sure.
Um, because that's the first one on the agenda, and we, and while she's here, I think she has some things to say, but um, can you just, just describe for us exactly what's happening here?
Sure, there's um, there's an existing access to the field uh, that's gonna be used for the driveway. There will be a new pole uh, put across from the S N E T ten ninety-five.
All right, show me the existing, I'm sorry, where's the existing access? What is it? That one, the two lines right there? Okay.
Yes, and there's a gate that's right here.
Got it.
Existing gate. So um, from the stub pole into the house, uh, we buried utilities. Um, this thing here, this is interesting. It's something I did. I was showing someone. Just a block. Uh, the driveway will come in, um, and then there'll be a, a garage out front. The well would be tucked into this little area, and then uh, you can drive around. The entrance to the house would be over in here. Uh, this is a little porch, six by twelve, I believe. Um, and then uh, there's a twelve by twelve area uh, getting into the house, and then the main part of the house with a basement, um, is, is, is right here. Uh, there would be a porch uh, out in the front. Uh, the stone wall that's shown in here, um, it would be open down below on the um north side of the house um, for a walkout um, to the basement, and then the existing system would come out of this corner uh, to a septic tank and to uh, uh, one trench. That's a small uh footprint system.
Okay, so while people are, while you're here, I'd like to know if other commissioners have questions about this. I'm actually having a bit of a hard time following it because I can't actually find the distance to the wetlands, which is what we care about, um, and what you're doing to protect the wetlands.
If you tell me what you're looking for a distance to, I can, I can tell you. There's a hundred foot line right there.
Uh, from, from where?
Uh, see where my cursor is?
I see the hundred foot line, a hundred foot feet from what?
Uh, from the flagged wetlands.
Can you pull that down a little bit, so we can see the wetlands?
Uh, I can. It's gonna, it's not gonna look the best, but uh, I can do that.
And what kind of wetland is it?
It's a uh, flagged wetland in a field.
I don't know what a flank wetland is.
A flagged wetland.
A flagged wetland, okay.
Yeah, so it's a wetland. It's a soil line.
Okay, so you're.
Just because I can uh, show you that much easier. Here's the flagged wetland in the field.
So you're outside the regulated area for that wetland, or you're within it? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, uh, we're out, the garage is totally outside of, of that area. There is a um, I think it's the old roadbed that got flagged, and that's uh, parallel to Skiff Mountain Road. You can see flags ten, nine, eight, and then on the other side, um, eleven, twelve, thirteen. This line in here, this hundred foot line is um, is you, using these flagged wetlands. So the house, you can see the, the north edge of the house is um, at the hundred foot line.
Got it.
So obviously, this part uh, with the house being, I think it's thirty-six feet, so sixty-four feet from the flagged wetlands here. Um, uh, if you do have a, a site visit, you'll see that the whole side of Skiff Mountain, it, it, there's this depression. Um, uh, Austin thought it was an old road, and I think she's right.
And then your two hundred feet, your two hundred feet from the brook?
Yep, the, the brook line is this, is this red line is what was used to offset. Um, and then that got us right in along this two hundred foot line right in here.
So again, you're.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is, uh, can you point out the location of that guest house again, please? I have a trouble with that.
Um, when you come down, I'll, let me uh, open this up a little bit more, and sorry for the background. Um, it, it doesn't print out in this area here. The, here's Skiff Mountain. You're coming down the hill, and then where it makes the, the turn uh, right in here, uh, there's a little cottage right.
Yes, already there, yes.
Yes.
Where is, where is the guest house in relation to that cottage?
That is the.
That, that is the guest house. It's.
Oh, that, that'll be it. I see, okay.
Yeah, from that, from that building to up in here where it's four hundred and twenty feet.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other questions?
Yeah, I think that's the question, and um, Austin, I know you wanted to say a few things, so now would be the time.
Okay, well, thank you so much, and thanks, Pat. Um.
All right, do you mind if I, I leave at this point? I apologize. I, this is, I was not, this is the first time I've ever had to do Zoom at the same time.
Well, we may have some follow-up questions for you, so just be prepared, okay? Thanks, Pat.
And, and I understand, uh, next time you will have something that has the whole thing, and I'll have something that has the total um, uh, picture on here, uh, rather than just setbacks.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a nice night.
You too.
Thanks, Pat. Um, so the package that I, that I provided you with has the Jay Fane report and um, also has uh, supplemental surveys that I have had made in, for uh, other reasons or for whatever. So if in the package that you received, there are the, the two pages that Pat Hackett provided. Then there's, uh, there is a one to thirty map that shows all the wetlands. Um, and so it's, I think Pat's plan is at one to twenty, but it gives you a little context on the one to thirty map about the extent of the wetlands. Even though, I didn't have, I didn't, I couldn't get I, anyway, uh, but it, it helps a little with the context. The, the two hundred B one or the A one hundred B or whatever, uh, that's a Torrenton area health issue, and I, I don't know whether you even have to look at that, but um, but the one to fifty map shows the entire pro- property, and again, without all these things that are distracting, so you can see where the barns and the pond and the stream and the brook and everything is. Unfortunately, the project, this project is not on those plans, because Bob Hawke did those, and um, so I don't, I don't know.
How do we know which map you're talking about? The one fifty, the one thirty? I don't know.
They're the scales.
Yeah, but I don't know which, how can we? We need a cleanly labeled site map for the Wetlands Commission that shows the wetlands, the topography, the checklist is right there for the application.
I see the one thirty.
I'm sorry, I thought I could do it individually. I didn't know you'd need it at all on one plan, but what I gave you was like.
Understand what we're looking for.
Yeah. Response, but I mean, the information is there, and I, I didn't realize I'd had to all be in one place.
Yeah.
You know? But you, you have the information, but I'm, it, obviously, I can see your point that it would be much more helpful to have it all in one spot, but I have no control about CAD systems, and you know, I, I, I really am hoping that despite the fact that everything is in all in one place, you could still maybe do a site visit. I don't know if you can.
Well, I don't, I don't know that this, I mean, yeah, but maybe we can do a site visit. That, the issue for us is all, all we care about is impact to wetlands and mitigating the impact to wetlands, or limiting the impact to wetlands. So all this other information, while in, interesting, is not really um, part of our mission and part of what we are allowed to regulate. So all we care about is protecting the wetlands. So the question for us, questions, what is the, you know, what's the land use that you're proposing? What is the impact to the land? Are you digging? Are you stockpiling dirt? How far away is that from the wetland? What are you doing to protect the wetland? You know, those are the kinds of questions that we're concerned about.
And I think all of that information you'll find on Pat Hackett's plan, but it doesn't put it in context.
And that's what we need, right?
Yeah.
And that's what our application asks for, right, Ty?
It does. Um, he, the check, if you go down the checklist, they've met all the requirements of the checklist, but it, it, Pat Hackett appears to do things, I mean, both applications are exactly the same. The, it's his style is very different than what I think we're accustomed to, and it makes it very difficult to read one map, and like you said, create a clear record, so.
And that's what we need.
It was, that's what I was trying to tell you at the, at the top of the meeting, was kind of like, the information's there, but you kind of have to piece it together. It's not as clear as you'd like it to be.
Yeah, and the commission can't, each individual commission member can't piece it together and come to their own conclusion. We need one thing that we can all agree on looking at it. This is what's being proposed. This is what our concern is, if any. This is what's gonna be done about it, if any. And that's what we approve as a commission. So I think we need, we do need the one map, and it sounds like Pat will provide it.
It does sound that way, yeah.
Yeah, so just to back up the bus here, you're putting in a home, right?
Yes.
And, and do you foresee potential impacts to the wetland, and if you do, what are you proposing to do to protect the wetland?
I, I don't.
You don't, okay.
I don't. I mean, it, what, it, the, the, I'm within the hundred feet and the two, first of all, when I, when I was looking at this site, it, it took me by surprise when the, when the um, intermittent stream, which is basically the runoff from Skiff Mountain Road
Right.
into the old roadbed was flagged as a wetland to me. So that, that, I thought this was a com- I had the entire house in the only place in this pasture that was compliant, and um, I mean, I know that you allow certain things in the regulated areas, but I, I was trying to, to put it in, it's close with all the setbacks. I thought I just barely made it. And then this, this was a, a bit of a surprise, but um, which is why I think that, you know, when you do the site visit, and if it, if it's rained, it'll be wet. If it hasn't rained, it'll be dry, but um, I, I do feel that um, there's plenty of room um, that, uh, I mean, I, I hired Jay Fane to make sure that, that what kind of soils they are. Pat's a civil engineer and has, can design the septic. I'm assuming that they're doing the right thing, and I think this is the right place for this building uh, from, for the farmer who's, who's gonna be um, hopefully moving into the house if I can build it, and and will then oversee his animals in the pasture and the hayings, so it's um, uh, it's, it's a dry part of the pasture. This is a very wet pasture. Um, they're wetlands, I mean, they're wet places everywhere. This is the only dry place. And um, but it's, it's just off the road. There's a lot less impact um, than the alternate site that I looked at, which is taking down tons of trees and moving stone walls and long trenches and long driveways and just, this seems less um, impactful. So I hope you will, you will consider it, and I'm, and I'm sorry that uh, that I didn't understand the, the, the um, what was it, I mean, I can totally understand that everything in one place is, is fine. I've just, I've never done this before, so I hope you will um, just, hopefully, Pat will get you the, the, the site plan with all the stuff about the wetlands uh, impacting only this house, not the cottage and the
Right.
backup septic system.
No, no.
And um, and if we can, if we can do that, I, I'm really hoping that I can um, get you know, not an, uh, not an approval from you, but if you can go and do this, look at the site, and it's all flagged, the flags are up. Um, the house is staked, the barn, well, I call the barn, but the garage is staked. Um, it may be premature for you to look at it, but if you could possibly look at it, so the next one, you will have done some site visits, and maybe we could move this along, because it's been terribly hard to find a, a civil engineer, and I've lost about nine months, so just, just trying to move this along.
You have a sense of urgency, yeah, that, but keep in mind, this is the first time we've seen this, so yeah.
Yo, no, absolutely. Oh, I totally understand that, and it's, you know, if you don't have the information you need, but if you just happen to have a little time in the next four weeks.
Yeah. Marge, are you familiar, you're pretty familiar with the spot, right?
Yeah, yeah.
What do you think, based on what you've just learned?
I, I think Austin has put it in one place that makes sense. Um, I mean, I haven't actually tramped around in that field, but I certainly know where it is.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I think.
I rode, I rode by it on my motorcycle a couple of days ago, and uh, yes.
You should not.
I'm sorry?
Nothing, sorry.
Anyway, I, I, I went up there to pick blueberries. And while I, while I was up there, I thought, well, I might as well go by the uh, the site there and take a look at it from the road. And uh, I, I see the general layout from the road. It's easy to understand what uh, they're doing on this map here. But uh, like you say, uh, I do, we do need accurate information about the wetlands line in regards to the houses and, and the whatever is being disturbed.
Okay.
And can I? I just kind of felt like the, the Pat's map was so chock-full of stuff, we couldn't see the forest or the trees in a way.
For us, anyway.
Yeah, for us laypeople, I think it could be simplified a little bit, and we'll get what we need. And Austin, you understand that we can't approve it tonight anyway, just because of the statute.
Oops, you're on mute. Don't like me. You're on mute, Austin.
The answer is yes. I never, I didn't expect that.
Okay.
Let's make sure.
All right. Candice, I see you. You've joined us. Do you have any thoughts about this, and?
No, y'all have covered pretty much everything. I mean, it, the only thing I would say is on the, the map showing that, wow, having a problem with the computer crashing here. Having a problem with the computer crashing here. Uh, the PDF plugin crashing rather. Um, the, the area between the disturbance of the house and the, the drainage area, wetland flagged will parallel to Skip Mountain Road. Doesn't have any indication of silt fencing in there.
Right.
Between, so he may want to add something to that area on the, the revised map.
Good point. So again, Austin, it's just any steps that are being taken to protect runoff into the wetland or the stream. Um, like silt fencing and so forth.
I think there is silt fencing on, on that side of the, on the plan. Um, it's a separate, it's not contiguous with the one to the east. It's, it's a separate one to this, to the uh, sorry. Yes, to the south toward the road. Um, I think there is silt fencing. Maybe it's not enough. We'll do whatever you want.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like it ends at the hundred and eighty or excuse me, eleven hundred and eighty, sixty eight foot interval. Goes from eleven seventy down to eleven sixty eight.
That's hard to read.
I'm not, I, I'm having trouble because I'm, I've never done. Documents on Zoom. I've never controlled Zoom, so I can't go to my package, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll share my screen and just use my cursor to point out where I'm looking.
Right.
Ken's good at that, Austin.
He's very good.
The rest of us are nuts.
I just do not know, you know.
Yeah.
Let's see. You see my?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Cursor wiggling. All right, so you got Skip Mountain down here.
Can, okay.
Yeah, let me zoom in on that. Well, hey, it didn't crash. Yay. All right. So you got Skip Mountain here. See, we have the silt fence. I'm assuming you guys have the silt fence. But it makes this ninety degree bend and comes up this way and then goes in there and then just terminates. As opposed to, you've got this one coming down this way. This house is, this terrain slopes down this way and eventually it's going to make its way into this. Whatever this is. So this silt fencing should connect somewhere in this area here along the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Can I also point out that there's a, a, just above at the driveway, there's this sort of retaining wall thing or that doesn't exist. Just no, uh, these, these blue, like, that's a, that's like a stone wall or something. That's a mistake.
Yeah, he deleted, he deleted that in on his system when he was screen sharing earlier.
Oh, okay. So I don't, that's not on my, on my co, I don't think it's on your hard copies.
No, I, I think you said that was just an errant mark or something.
Yeah, he took it out.
Projected it.
Okay.
Yep.
Um. Yeah, I wonder if I, if there's, so, so what you would like would be to have this plan. On a map that shows all the wetlands on this side of the stream essentially, including this, this uh, old roadbed that's used as a sort of culvert. And in the meantime, um. There is a separate drawing that shows.
Wow.
The um, in your package, there's a, there's a, a, my property and it shows basically the. Across the stream and includes the bottom part where the guest house and the barn is. And then there's something that shows the entire lot. And I think I've taken up enough of your time and. Um, unless you have questions for me, I'll let you go along and I'll just try to get. Uh, as much stuff on this as possible. But just to say that we do have, once you, if you looked at the one to thirty plan with the wetlands, you'll see. Where the hundred feet is setting back from. From the stream to the east, from the wetlands to the north, the wetlands to the south, and that's the hundred and the two hundred and the one hundred. That is marked on, on um, uh, on the plan that, that Pat provided.
And then we just need to have the actual activity and distance from the right, you know, distance from the wetland identified on, on the site plan.
But it is on this. Oh, you mean the new site plan?
Yeah. Yeah.
Gotcha.
So um, it sounds like Austin would like us to come see the site and um, I'm going to suggest that Ty do, maybe do a. I mean, how's the rest of the commission feel? Uh, I'd like to see it. Uh, but maybe we don't need to do a, a special meeting for it, or maybe everybody else wants to see it at the same time. What do you think?
I'm somewhat familiar with it and I'm also heading out on vacation for my September retreat, so I don't know how much time I've got.
Okay, okay, so, um. Ken Johnson, you've already looked at the site. Ken Deets, Anthony, do you want to go together or separately to visit this?
I'm, I'm not going to have time.
Okay, all right. So um, I'm going to try to take a look at it and I'm going to coordinate with Ty, so I know what the hell I'm looking at. And um, and we'll meet again next, next month. It doesn't. It doesn't sound like the commission has serious concerns. It's just trying to understand exactly what you're doing. Is that right? Am I?
Yep.
That's correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, so it sounds like we're kind of on the right path forward. Austin, we just need a better sense of the whole thing in one place, and that's really for the record as well as our own understanding.
Um, I, I totally get that. And if any, I'm, I'm in Maine at the moment, but. But I'm coming back at the end of the month and, and before Labor Day weekend and onward, if anybody is visiting and wants clarification. Uh, I'm, I'm going to be around. So if I can always help with it.
Or. Thank you, thank you.
But thank you so much for considering this and I will, um, we'll be talking in a month.
You got it. Okay, wonderful. In the meantime, uh, uh, Ty will reach out directly to you, okay?
Thank you so much. Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night, Austin.
Night.
Hey. So. Ty, are you clear what you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah, no, I always kind of knew.
Okay.
That was going to happen.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, all right.
That's good.
Uh, so we need a motion to table application one, three, two, six dash two, three to the next regular meeting. So. Second?
Second.
Thanks. Um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Great. Okay, we're going to move on then to application thirteen, twenty seven, twenty three, which Pat quickly walked us through. And you're saying um, uh, Ty, you have the same kind of concerns with this one.
Yeah, he's just got a style that's, I, I'm not used to and it seems like what I'm hearing from you guys, you don't prefer this style either.
No, no, we, in, in the applicant, it's, we need a site map that shows stuff in relation to itself.
I completely agree.
The wetlands, and that's what you should ask for applicants, I think, going forward. Um, because it's. Impossible for us to come up with a common. Uh, vision that we're either approving, disapproving, modifying, you know, without that, I think it's hard.
What I think he's doing and, you know, maybe to the benefit of his client is he's trying to use the same map for the health department as he's using for everything else and. It's not good enough. It, it's a struggle to understand it from this perspective. Probably great for the health department, but not so much for us.
Right, and he can turn on and off certain characteristics of his map and print.
Sure.
What we need. So. Yeah. All right, so.
Mason is here for this. Mason Lord is also involved in this project.
Hey, Mason.
Have something else he wants to add. I know it was briefly touched upon that, uh, um, a landscaper had come in actually today. Regarding planting some trees along the Kent Cornwall Road area, which is also within the regulated area. So. I suggested that he reach out to the applicant or, or Mason or Pat to try to get the two projects on the same land. Rather than splitting up them up separately. Doesn't seem like he was able to get that accomplished today, but. Possibly they're going to amend the application to add that.
Is that right?
Yes.
Makes sense.
Yep, that'll be added to the application. Um, and then the only other note that I would like to make is that the existing septic. Has failed and they're getting their system pumped about every two weeks right now.
Wow.
So. There's definitely some urgency.
Okay, so we're going to get a complete application with everything on it to consider at our next regular meeting. Are you saying, Ty, that what we have is complete, but will be added to? Is that basically what you're saying?
I, I, it will be added to and it is complete, but it's in that small Snapchat version that isn't ideal for the record.
So we will get, you will communicate to, to Pat that we need the same.
Right.
Presentation.
I mean, this one, just, it looks like it needs a legend. It looks like everything's on here. And I'm just making assumptions as to what I'm looking at, but if there were a legend defining it, then. I don't, this, this is a little bit easier to, to see what's going on as opposed to the other one that was split. I'm sure these, these purple, these pinkish purple, you know, fifty foot, seventy five foot, hundred foot concentric rings going out, those have to be the setbacks. From the, the wetland area, so. I, I think he just needs a legend for this one. Everything else is, is pretty apparent.
I think I actually, Ty, if that, I'd ask you to take a hard look at that and just see if, but you're right. It looks that way to me too. How about you, Marge?
I'm trying to look at it, but I can't see it clearly enough.
Oh, Candice, can you pull it up?
I can't.
When you zoom in, I can't. Without getting my nose right up against the screen.
Which we know we don't want to do. It's not good for us.
Uh-oh, it's thinking, it's flashing.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
My.
Oh, dear.
I don't have a PDF reader and they just updated this Microsoft junk that I was using.
Of course, of course.
It's not working.
Okay, well, that's a paper map.
Well, I'm, uh, hang on, I'm in seizure mode at the moment.
You've got the paper map, Lynn, and you don't see a legend that we need.
There is no legend at all.
Right.
Uh, let's see. Are you able to see my screen now or?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Is it the map? All right, it looks like my other monitor died.
You got it.
All right, so what, what were we looking for, Marge?
A legend, which there isn't any.
There is, there isn't one. Yep.
Right, there is no legend and there is, so you were talking about, it's got the topography, it's got the. Point out where they, there we are, okay.
These lines, a hundred foot, seventy five foot, fifty foot, and they're all, the, this curvature is all relative.
Right.
To the outer edge of this pond area. So I'm assuming that this is, there must be some sort of low spot over here.
There is.
Judging by the topography, so. And there, there's probably a, a, you know, somewhere the stream has to come through from. Uh, who's across the street here? Um, they were just in a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago. Um. Oh, no, the.
At any rate.
Yeah.
All of the activity is inside the regulated area, the way I see it.
Um, well, if this is the regulated area, they're looking to go from this septic system here. This way.
Right.
To a proposed septic out here.
Right.
Oh, up over the right.
With your regulated area being up in this, this upper left area on the map.
Right.
So most.
So they're, they're moving the fields or the, or whatever that is, the, the septic, uh. The liquids wherever they go, that's outside the uh, two hundred foot area.
I, I think so, but is, is there not? Is there not a?
I, I don't see.
There's a stream on, there's a stream on this side of the road somewhere, or is this a crossing?
It's, it's just a crossing. It's a crossing to the south of there. So if you go up above the K and Kent Cornwall Road.
Okay.
The stream crosses under there. So this is a big improvement.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're quite away, they're outside the regulated area.
Yep.
And for that. I think.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I can't toggle back to the other screen at the moment. Um.
It looks like.
Not sure what happened here.
I don't know what I'm looking at either.
Let me stop this for a second.
And we'll have to get you a new computer.
Uh, yeah, um, hang on a second.
A wetlands computer just for you.
No, I'm, uh, I might have to restart the computer. Hang on.
Uh-oh, we might lose him. Yep, we lost him. All right, so, um, but from what we were just looking at.
I don't, I. I still don't think you're seeing the entire property in its entirety on what he has there.
What do you mean?
Baby Mason, clarify.
What are you talking about, Ty, in terms of what he's proposing to do or?
No, just the entire picture of the property, the entire.
Right.
The entire site plan. So similar to the last one, I don't think it's the entire site.
What's missing?
There's. Am I correct the way that I'm seeing it, Mason? There's a, a significant body, uh, stream that kind of runs through. A whole side of the property that you're not seeing.
It's not on the map, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, it.
It's not that we're not seeing it. Yes. Right. So that needs to be added. And then the question of how far away from that stream and uh, where the regulated area is in relation to the work that's going on. And I think that's what Ken Dees was trying to say, but then um. Uh, Marge, she was kind of familiar with property, was saying it was just really a crossing.
Yeah, it's where the Cobble Brook goes underneath Route seven is to the left of the pond in this drawing.
Okay.
Okay.
So what's the brook that uh, Ty's talking about?
Yes, so.
It's one brook.
Right, it, it goes all the way. Mason, am I seeing it right? Is there a portion cut off or?
The, the stream runs from the southern end of the property up to Route seven and then under Route seven.
Got it. So it's not showing up, you haven't put it on the site plan and it needs to be.
But where's the property boundary, uh, Mason, between this house and Rufus? Is it on this, on this plan or?
Well, it should be.
Yeah, I mean, it, so is the edge of the plan, is that actually the property boundary?
Uh, I think it's the orange line.
What, Anthony?
I think it's the orange line.
Orange line.
Well, we shouldn't be guessing it this way. Um, that does need to be.
I don't see an orange line.
Well, kind of red, I guess.
Maybe I'm colorblind, but I don't see them. Oh. Well, the. The, the elevations are all orange, aren't they? Or they're red.
The elevations are blue.
They're blue, yeah.
They're green.
Okay, oh, yeah.
The red, that's the setback.
The red, that's the, right, that, that's setback from the pond.
Right.
And there is um. There are some elevations, like the four forty is red, but I, I don't see an orange line.
It's, it's the one with the meets and bounds straddling it. Like if you go to uh, the Kent and Kent Cornwall Road.
Yep.
You see beneath it, um, two hundred and fifty five feet and then it has.
Got it.
It's a bounce.
Okay.
All right, well, still, we need the stream and we need the distance from the stream. Um. Marked.
Yep.
Okay. So we need some additional information. Ty, is there anything, knowing that, knowing what you know, is there any concern that you have with regard to what's being proposed?
No, no, I think it's a matter of a clear record, that's all.
Okay, okay. And Marge, it sounds like you feel the same way?
Hmm.
And Ken Johnson and Tony, Anthony?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if, Mason, we need, if you can make sure that we have a complete site plan that we can just review. And if there's anything else that comes up in the meantime, Ty will reach out to you. But it looks like we'll be able to consider this an act at the next regular meeting from what I'm hearing from. Um, everybody else on the commission.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm sorry that we're, we've lost Ken Dees, but I'm betting he's not going to, I'm betting he's having problems. So uh, maybe we'll take a motion to um. For this application to the next regular meeting.
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
Thanks, Ken Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, very good. Thank you, Mason.
Thank you.
I think uh, in the future, I think we ought to have the owners. Provide a separate. Uh, plot plan with the regulated areas. And the uh, the one hu, the hundred and two hundred foot lines. And where the water courses are and leave all of the rest of this stuff off of it. Or maybe you, you need elevations too.
You need elevation, you need the proposed activity, you need the distance. You need elevation, you need the proposed activity, you need the distance away from the wetland and the water course, and that's typically what we get. And unfortunately, in this particular case with Pat, because he's trying to, it sounds like meet a number of masters with one set of plans. Um, he's gonna need to pull out the information we need in the future, and I think Ty's gonna have to tell him that directly, or I will, however you want to deal with it. You know, I think he's just trying to be efficient and I certainly appreciate that, but we need, we need what we need, so. Yeah. Thanks, Ken.
We we just have to be able to understand what we're looking at, that's all.
You got it, you got it. Okay, so we are uh I just lost my agenda.
That's about it.
Is that about it? Because I literally just don't know where my, oh, here we go. Oh, no. No, no.
Yeah, just communications, written and verbal, and no German.
Okay. So communications, any?
No, it's it's been quiet. Truly, these applications just came in last week. I almost thought you were gonna end up canceling this meeting. They were it's been quiet as far as wetlands goes.
Wow, which is amazing, given all the rain we've had.
I know, and we don't want to give Jeff the wrong idea.
It's not that easy.
But you know, Ty, do you um I I did want to ask you this because I know there are a number of people doing work in Kent, um and I know we have not seen wetland applications from them, and I just want to know I and I'm not saying that they're doing work in wetlands, but do you drive around the town and check things out?
As much as I can. I mean, there's a limited amount of time to do that, but I go out and do site inspections as much as possible. And then when I when I go out to do like certificates of zoning compliance, I kind of check the area as a whole. Um, but like you said, there's been a lot going on with the rain, so.
Yeah.
We should all all keep our eyes out as we're
Yes.
moving around.
Yeah, if you see something.
Say something.
Say something, exactly.
Oh, here comes Candice. Somebody say hello.
Hey, Ken.
Can we just?
You finished, right?
Well, we just, yeah, well, we basically um agreed that basically what is being proposed is probably it, okay, but we need better information for our next regular meeting. And also, if there's a need for any additional information that Ty would, you know, get in touch with Mason, so sorry, we didn't, we weren't sure if you were gonna be able to get back on or not.
Yep, no, I'm good. I was, I was doing too much. I had too many things open at once.
I know that feeling. Well, thank you for coming back. And we were just talking about um the fact that there wasn't really a lot on our the on the agenda tonight and one, you know, just making sure that Ty has the opportunity once in a while to cruise town and make sure that people are actually applying for what they need to.
I mean, I there's a couple notices of potential violation that I've sent out and have been addressed and are in the works to be coming in to, you know, speak with you about some significant significant projects that took place without permits. Um, so I, you know, as I find out about them, I do address them and sometimes it takes several months to get people to get their plans together and come in and do the right thing, but quite often they are responsive, so.
Well, that's good. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, and no written communications? And what was the next thing on the agenda since I lost my agenda in the pile?
That's it.
Yep.
Um, just a reminder for me that I'm not gonna be at the next meeting after scheduling it, thinking we're gonna be. Um, I thought I would be here because of my South Kent school schedule, but that got changed.
When's the next regular meeting?
Twenty fourth, something like that.
Or twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth.
September twenty fifth?
Yeah.
So Anthony, Jeff, uh Ken and Ken, can you be here for the next regular meeting?
Yes.
Yes, I can be.
And me too. Ken Johnson, I'll be here.
Excellent, and Candice?
I I I should be, but I could get stuck working. Um, that's a really rough time of year. Um, so I won't really know until that day if I'm gonna get dragged into something or not.
Is Paul gonna be back?
So it's like Anthony and Jeff are available. I think we'll be okay. If we have Anthony, Jeff, Ken Johnson, me, hopefully Paul will be okay.
Yep.
But hopefully, Ken, you can join us, so I get it.
I, yeah, I should be. It's, I'll be joining from work, so.
Okay, okay. Well, I think that's it. If there's nothing else to come before the commission, we can take a motion to um adjourn. But before we do, Jeff, thank you so much for agreeing to serve. Um, and we are we're thrilled that your first night was kind of an easy entry, more or less.
Oh, yes.
And we're really grateful to you and and welcome aboard. And um Candice, I hope everything goes okay with your computer because.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's just, like I said, I had way too much stuff open. I started getting nasty grams from my video card saying, no. Enough is enough, no.
Oh, God, all right. Oh, God, technology. Love it or leave it, but you can't really leave it, okay? Um, okay, so we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks a lot. Thanks, Ty.
Good night, everybody.
Donna.
Hey, Marge, be extra, extra careful. We have a really, really, really big bear up here now. He tried to pay us a visit on the deck while we were having dinner.
Tonight?
So, no, a couple, a couple Fridays ago.
Yeah, I got, I got him too.
Yeah.
Took away the best feeder that I had just stuck out for half an hour and he got it and took it out in the middle of the swamp.
The AP says do not feed bear, do not feed birds because
Yeah.
Bears and.
We're feeding bears, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Hi, Donna. All right, I'm gonna head out. Thank you. You guys are great. See you later.
Good night.
Take care. Bye bye.
Good night, all.
Okay, take care.